Nothing.
They're funny.
I've never heard of paper.
So this might help.
What?
Looking good.
Very dark. I don't know if this guy's working. Possible hanging on, but.
The power button, you mean?
Yeah, underneath those.
All right.
Thanks, Erica. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Lindsay Melkey, Chief of Staff. And here with us today is Leisha Frandina, the Executive Director of the Adams County Education Consortium. And we are glad to be back with you to provide an update since our last study session in June. So hand it over to Leisha to get us started.
All right, thanks for having me back. It sounds like it's been a long day, so I'll try and be brief. I wanted to. So, quick refresher on the program background, but we went through it, I know, in detail last time. So questions at the end, if we have them. And we were able to meet with the state in our Cozy, around our Cozy achieve pre-proposal. Wanted to talk like that. And then I wanted to talk about our recommendations. And we are requesting direction and the investment that the Commissioners would like to, for us to spend on these next rounds of grants. We went through this last time, but we've been partnering for 10 years around the state scholarship dollars match with the county dollars around marijuana revenue. As I reported last time, that investment by the state is going down. That is still true, but there are a couple of recommendations we are able to work through with them to try and maximize the dollars that Adam County, Adams County wants to spend in this program. I did want to give another update on our success in this program because we are still finding students that had not reported back after the pandemic. So those numbers will only continue to go up. But we are at a seventy percent rate.
Oh, great. Okay, that's better. Seventy-three percent rate. And we also took out that pandemic cohort because it's so low. It was fifty percent finish. You started in 2019. Without that one strange, strange time period, it's a seventy-nine percent success rate, which compared thirty percent by the state. And that is across the board in the state. So I just want to remind you that this scholarship fund that you all have started is for almost entirely first generation and all low-income students. So the thirty percent rate of the state is for all students from all backgrounds. So this is a remarkable success rate. Okay, so. What I reported last time is Cozy is doing away with the program we've been using with them for 10 years. They are doing so for a variety of reasons. The biggest impacts for us is they're no longer giving money to counties. They're only giving money to nonprofits and through a competitive process. Their stated reason for this is so that they are able to disperse funds more widely throughout the state. Also hit on a lot more rural areas. They also are aware, as they know the county is as well, that marijuana revenue dollars are going down. So they want to be somewhat conservative with that investment. They also hired a third-party team to assess the program and felt like it could be more efficient and money spent differently. It is challenging for Adams County more than other counties because Adams County was getting one of the largest groups of that bucket of money based on the population of Adams County. So it really doesn't affect some places as much as it does affect Adams County. They are phasing in.
Just a clarifying question. Can you, what does Cozy stand for?
Yes, thank you. We had a glossary in the first, in our first thing because there's so many. It's the Colorado Opportunity Scholarship Initiative. So it is where they are housing any kind of matching programs, matching grant programs.
Okay. And then what is the TKTK?
I don't know why that TKTK.
That's my fault. That was a placeholder. My fault, I jumped on that. All right. So TKTK isn't a real thing.
It's not real. It's just called, we were calling it the Adams County Scholarship Fund.
Okay.
It is called MSS.
MSS, okay, got it, thank you.
Matching student scholarship. It's what they call it.
Thank you.
They're dissolving that. We're still under that. We've been operating it in cohorts of four years. We will still have cohorts and access to that money for three more years, including this year. So we could do a couple of rounds of that. And that money seems more solid, that it will be, it's still not a competitive process in the same way, it'll still be awarded to the county. And we have two more years of that. They're dissolving that and they're replacing it with a new program that will only be available every four years. So as I said last time, it still is a drastic cut across the board in this program for every municipality and every organization involved. Because it's only available every four years. And you all were putting in around $500,000 a year and the state was matching another $500,000. So that's a really significant drop. And then what they think will be the best way to handle this is to do away with a lot of little programs they had and have three under this umbrella of Cozy, their department. So they'll, they'll phase out this last one. They'll have achieve. And they'll have another opportunity called Career Lodge, which initially was to re-engage students. But we know in Colorado, actually across the board, that's pretty hard to do once they leave college. So it's also targeting our heist and demand places of study. So whatever were considered the top jobs, if students go into that major, they would get more money in there. We did apply for a little bit of that money too, just as like a trial of a pilot. And we were awarded that if the county does want to match that. And, and we can discuss that. Okay, so we got answers for everybody who wanted answers the last time on what's happening here. We were able to meet with two members of the Board of Directors. Lindsay joined and Rocky Mountain Partnership, Lisandra Gonzalez joined because I know there were some questions about what her role is in advocacy here. She made it clear on that meeting as an appointed role. She can't really advocate for individual applications, but she'll always support Adams County as a whole. And she did convene a lot of important players to really get some thought partnership around this to see how we could maximize what dollars the, the state is willing to spend on this. So what they are suggesting is they really want to like provide some solutions around this. And they think that we should maximize the dollars that the county wants to invest by splitting it through these three programs. So continuing with the MSS for the next two years, putting money into achieve and then putting money into launch. And I'll, I'll get to this, but the way it solves kind of our equity issue is that way we can move students from one program to the other so that we don't have a graduating class getting nothing. If you remember, what I was saying was one of my biggest worries is when this is available, we'll be able to award it to the class of 2020, next year's the first one, so 2026. But then if it's not available for another four years, we're leaving out classes 27, 28, and 29 because they want that money to follow. So they feel that in a really messy puzzle, we will be able to try and move students around and hope for more funding streams to come into these buckets and try and get not as many students as we were probably awarding at that, at the high level, but students every year from all the districts. And also anybody who lives in Adams County, we can solve for that too. Even if they're not in the district school, if that's what the Commissioners want, we can also open up that application to anyone who goes to school or lives in Adams County.
And what do you mean by not a district school?
So pinnacle charter school.
No.
Thank you. Yeah, so that would be, it's just that the state allows for any of those things.
Yeah.
Somebody mentioned something about Aurora. There's not a high school in that section of Adams County that I know of. But that can be a discussion too. But right now, the stipulations are that they have to live in Adams County or go to school in Adams County and be at one of the seven public school districts.
And then, so that, that's the geographic limitation, right? And what we're doing is we're expanding it from being an organizational thing, or it's kind of now an organizational thing is that it has to be within one of those districts. But what, there's still going to be criteria. The criteria that we had before to make sure it's needs-based.
Absolutely.
Is still going to be needs-based. So even if you have somebody at a school that may not be a traditional school, as long as they're public, they shouldn't ideally have like discriminatory practices, right? And it should still go to people with need, right?
So I think for, from the state's perspective, it's true that it, you know, the, the criteria is it has to be given the location based on the match. But the, the main part for the state is it's need-based and that they must meet the criteria of being need-based. I think from the state's perspective, Depp or Betra area, kids move so much between schools and to all different places that they want it open to as many students in whatever kind of public institution. And it has to also go to college in a public institution. And that does include charter schools as eligible.
Right, and then I think what I'm getting is, I'm here kind of reading the room. Is there a question of what, what kind of discretion do we have in that?
I think my concern is that not all charter schools are the same. And many are highly predatory with the public schools. There are many stories of charter schools, particularly in the Commerce City area. Adams 14 in particular has had a lot of problems with students being invited to enroll, staying, and then inviting them to leave right after the point, or not point in time count, but the count.
Similar type of, yeah.
And there's a variety of that. There's also a lot of concerns with charter schools not being open to despite regulate, you know, regulations requiring them to any student with an IEP, sometimes even students with ALP, students with a 504, students with learning differences. And so I think as a public government institution, we support our public educated students. That's where I'm at.
Dion, and I want to make a distinction that I think is important here is we're kind of talking about this. And I know we'll get to it in a couple of slides. But, you know, Adams County elected to use marijuana tax revenues to support the scholarship fund. And at the time, the Cozy program as the framework existed was really valuable because of the match provided, because of the structure we were able to work within to reach the students we wanted to reach. We have a couple of things we're trying to work through. One is what we do with the current cohorts in the program as it exists. But also just a reminder that those tax revenues, marijuana revenues don't have to be paired with the Cozy program. That was a policy decision that we made. And we have a lot of discretion about how we want to invest those dollars in these programs or in the future, if we want to rethink how we're investing those to have a scholarship fund that we want to operate. And at the last meeting, you know, we talked about having some work groups, having some more work over the next year or two to really look at how we want to invest those marijuana revenue dollars. And if this program is still the right one, because the matching opportunity is a lot less than what it previously was. And because we do have more all the control over what we want to do with those marijuana revenues, that that's the conversation over the next couple of years. While we also take care of the kids who are currently enrolled and have cohorts that were looking through the system. And I think it's just important to keep in mind as we're talking about this.
I appreciate that a lot. Thank you for bringing this forward. I did talk to maybe Lindsay. I've talked to some members of the board regarding the students in Aurora that live in Adams County. They just don't have the facility. But I still believe that those students are eligible to undertake in this. So I would like to see that expanded to include.
Because they're residents of Adams County.
They're residents of the county. They just don't have, they don't have a high school. They have other schools, but they don't have a high school on the Adams County side.
And we work with them on certain things too, just even in our organization, so.
Yeah, I really appreciate that. I do like your idea, Dion, that we take a look at this. So then my question, I have two questions. I, well, I have one question, well, it's two. My first question is, is then when we award it, I'm thinking of this as encumbered versus, are we encumbering like the four-year scholarship? And then we have a running balance? Or does, is it offsetting every year we have to? Does that make sense? Am I making any sense? I don't know how much like.
What we've committed.
Committed, thank you.
Committed. So every year, we have a contribution to the scholarship fund. I think maybe you could talk a little bit about how we fund the cohort along the four years.
Because we tell the kid that it's for four years, right? So year four, which would be 2020, 930 class, when this funding, do we need to start blunting this program over time to finish the cohorts that are in place?
My understanding just from the marijuana sales tax and how you all have budgeted this is it is a, because you have, you were one of the only places to do all four years funding. The state usually just gives a bucket of money at the beginning. And it's like, get, get 500 students a scholarship. But, which I think is really admirable. What you all decided is that our biggest dropout rate is after the first year of any kind of post-credentialed program. And again, this is for two-year, this is for certificates. Like we can award for all those things. We were even able to offer concurrent books and tuitions the last years as well, under the old grant. So what you would do is because you wouldn't have $2 million to give to the, us, right? To distribute at the beginning, you would, you would give 500,000. We would get the 500,000 match for Cozy. And then we would distribute them. Then we do the whole process again for their second year and third year and start the new cohort. So I know that the team here has been budgeting a bit more conservatively and there was always like a surplus, but marijuana dollars are going down. I don't think it's going to be a huge problem because this is significantly a less grant, what they're offering, even with the other two. You're still going to come in and, and I, you're still going to come in at max probably 1.27 over four years. That's 930,000 less than you did in the last four years. So it's almost $1 million less of an investment. And that's why I think Dion and the team would really like to partner on like, how do we get strategic about education funding? Money from the marijuana dollars to think of, do we want to go higher in these matches? Is this a good program for it? Is there other ways you all want to see this money invested?
What you see here in number two is that in addition, everything Leisha just shared, can you go to the next slide actually really fast? So we are, we have right now a fund balance of $930,000. We've worked with finance, Mark is here, thank you, Mark. And the fund itself is bringing in about $450,000 a year. The board was already contributing about 5, 500,000 a year. We could continue to do that with the 450 that's coming in when we have that surplus. So that would be less conservative doing about 550 a year. But we could continue, the board could continue with the investment that they've already been giving to the program. So I just had one question. I see Steve and then Julie. I do like your idea of putting a group together to study this. And, you know, Rocky Mountain Partnership's been such a great partner. I didn't realize she knows the appointment to Cozy. I mean, in your next life, Lisandra, you could manage our program. Like, are you, I don't know, are you set up as a nonprofit ACC?
Yes.
You are, so you can still accept it? These funds, if it has to go to a nonprofit or a higher ed?
Yes, it couldn't go to the county anymore. It would have to go to a nonprofit.
You're going to have to get that through a competitive process now.
Yes.
From the state.
Yes.
Oh, understood.
So she's the one we need to support.
Yes.
Yeah.
An opportunity, maybe this, your group that you put together is the Hispanic Restaurant Association. If they, if there's a center D for a partnership there. And, and this would go, you know, insert association name here, whether it's a union, association, or. In HRA, we have a lot of school districts that do CTE. And they do food service. But, but what they do at the high school level is that they do mostly food handling. And they don't get the training of patry and all the different things, the cost analysis of, you know, cost of goods to what the price point sell is for food. But I would love to see like an HRA of continuing those students that are already in food service to go to some kind of culinary program. That one just happens to come to mind. So those are my two items. So Julie and then Steve. So I realized I missed the June conversation that you guys had because I was out of town.
I think I missed too.
So just wanted to clarify real quick. So with this proposed budget for our, our next phase, or I, I guess what I'm trying to get a sense of, how, how much is each scholarship that we give out?
Yeah, so we, we even have, we can speak to this because we run a lot of different scenarios, but we don't know how much will be awarded. But in the past, it's been about 3,000. That has not included what they're requiring now, which is wraparound services to support the students all four years. So AC easy until last year was just kind of donating the wraparound service part. And we partnered with Goodwill Career Services to pay a consultant there to follow those students. With the new scholarship, it'll probably be on average around a $1,500 scholarship that they are getting.
For years or just total?
No, for, they'll get it each year.
Continue the four-year.
I've been a big advocate with the state. They said, where did you get this number? Because I don't know. Any $1,000 makes you go to the next year. They don't really, they, I think they're being super conservative because this is also a program that could go away with our federal situation. So I'm hopeful that as they're still looking for more people to, more nonprofits to participate, that we might see more money at the first years of this until the word gets out about this program. So we have asked to put in an individually graded proposal that is higher than what they said they're going to give. So we'll still go for that and say like, this is what we know from the data that this has made a difference, that we're seeing a huge success rate, one of the biggest in the state. And 3,000 on average is, is important for that. We'll also make the argument that the reason some students were giving back money the first year was because the state had another program called Achieve that is now gone. And that was paying for a fifth-year senior to do their first year of college. So often, they were getting that free through their district. That has been eliminated this year, so that'll go away for next year. So students are going to be in more need for financial help than they were in the past.
Okay. And, okay, so $1,500 potentially for four years is what we're going to be able to do moving forward. And that's by contributing all of the marijuana sales tax revenue.
That would be just the one program. So it'd be about like with what it looks like you have available and it would still be more. We could divide that between that program. Cozy launch, which Lynn, I think, might fit really well with what you're talking about with the culinary program. Because they are really focusing on career-based certificates and different things. And we can still use this matching student scholarship for the next two years to move students around and get money. So those students, we still hope for the next two years, we can give them those $3,000 scholarships. The new cohort would probably be more around 1,500 to 2,000.
So are, are, are there funds outside of this tax revenue that we're putting towards this program? Like general fund? Anything with that? No, all of the funds are living from this.
This growing up.
Okay, so, okay. The reason why I ask this, and, and I'm just going to be real honest, is, so I'm, I'm a first-gen college grad. I got my little scholarship from Middleton Education Foundation for 1,000 bucks. It bought me books for one semester. It was helpful, but obviously not very impactful for the length of my education. But one of the things I, I've always was curious about this when I learned about the, the county does this with this money is, is this a county's role in providing financial aid to students? And it's something that I'm just kind of wrestling with. I understand, yes, it's very popular. We want to help our students. There's lots of other nonprofits helping students. But is this the role of the county government to be providing scholarships to students? Is something that I've always kind of wrestled with. And so Dion, when you're like, is this what we still want to continue to do? I don't know. It just was something I'm thinking about is, is, is this still the most appropriate use for these dollars? I understand that I'm probably in the minority here, but it is something that I'm personally wrestling with. Just as we're looking at how our budget is being flipped on its head, literally. We're looking under every single rock. And, and so I'm just kind of wrestling with that. I'm not really sure either way where I'm going or what else we might want to use these dollars for. But just wanted to be, I guess, just transparent about that fact. And I know it's a decision you guys made before I got here, but now I'm here, so I need to raise a question.
Heidi, can you, can you clarify again what the, it is my understanding, because this was passed in the, but the ballot, when I ran in 14, that it was that they approve it for educational purposes.
Okay.
And so what we need to know is like, what are the limitations and the intentions? Because even if it's a little bit more squishy, it was truly gone to the voters and approved based on the fact that it's for education.
Okay, yes, that's awesome.
So I would say that like, I'm always open for exploring within whatever those boundaries are. If we move beyond outside education, I can't support that. Now, education might have broad enough to include vocational training, you know, other types of.
Certification.
Advancement certification. And I'm okay with that.
Because sales taxes is to be used for educational programs in the county. And then for direct costs associated with it.
Well, I mean, of those programs. But it's not going to go towards like, like drainage sidewalks. I mean, like, it's not going to go towards those.
Lots of training.
And, and to your point, Julie, that is not normally a county power or function to support education. But because you can dedicate sales tax to particular purposes and then it's not using general funds, you're basically just tied into whatever the purpose was in the tax. Okay, educational programs in the county.
I think that's a fair question. You know, we're talking about the investment, you know. When, when I was saying, you know, this is something that we're looking at, part of the question is, is scholarship fund specifically what we want to continue to invest in? Is the scholarship fund plus Cozy what we want to invest in? But I think that there's ways to interpret that. In Denver, we use marijuana funds to fund after-school programs, for example. And that was the link to education. So it wasn't a scholarship, but we, you know, it was a different use, but tied to it.
Part of the reason we did Cozy at the beginning, part of the reason we got to now reassess if it's the right, is because we turned $1 into $2.
Yes.
And you were giving.
You were getting.
Students of need, based on need, the chance you hear every year, how many of those people may not have gone to college at all if they didn't have, one, the scholarship, and two, the support behind it in those moments where you needed that nudge to say, stay with it. That first-year cliff, stay with it, we're with you. And it turned on, it totally rebooted our relationship with ACEC. Thank you. And also, you literally. Where we were able to go to the community and say, we give a million dollar scholarship a year and it only costs us half a million. And we're able to get, and it was four-year scholarships, uh, and it was fairly significant and meaningful to the point where. It literally helped keep a large number of people to get. Post-secondary edu- uh, to get secondary education, put, you know, collegiate education without, that thing may not have happened. And when you see the people in the room and they see the families, you literally see how we are, we are. Changing potentially intergenerational dynamics of of poverty. By simply inserting an opportunity that some of these families may never have. And those are the stories we've literally heard. Both publicly and anecdotally. And so for me, it's one of the things that I've been the most proud of participating with all of you and the previous commissioners is to be able to look at all those. Those families who who have this opportunity. Now, if the opportunity, because the match is not as great as it was in the past, um. It's something we need to explore other options. I'm okay with that. If it means expanding into some of these other areas, I'm totally okay with that. But I'm gonna be seeking that that micro-level impact, one person at a time, what, you know? Because I really believe that like our job, I mean, we're spending four hundred thousand dollars per unit for affordable housing.
Mm-hmm.
There is an element of us understanding that. Our jobs as local government is one block at a time, you know, one property at a time and one person at a time. And so for me, when you look back and you aggregate that, that's how we make incremental change in local government. So that's all I seek is whatever we do. I just, I'm gonna still look at that North Star and ask that we keep that in mind.
Um, this is Emma Grace Steve Day. Um, and I completely agree with Steve and everything he said. And I think also when we look at our spectrum of programs, um, this, yes, the match was a huge deciding factor. And.
Stretch the dollar.
Yeah, stretch the dollar.
Who doesn't love free money?
Right? Um, also, um, I think that. We're doing something that no one else is really doing. I think we're able to serve students that don't have a lot of access to other scholarships. And when you look at the spectrum of economic offerings in Adams County. Our high school graduation rate and our college completion rate are below our peers. And so when you look at the job opportunity spectrum. In Adams County, this scholarship effort is something we have been able to do with dedicated funds. To expand the types of jobs that our students qualify for. So that we have more of a diversity of offerings. And so for me, this is about um, trying to lift up. Our community both in that example, because you talked about how important it was to be a first-generation college student. By supporting primarily first-generation college students, we are changing families. And we are changing generations. And so I, for me, like Steve. This program is something I've been remarkably proud of, and the success like rates just really speak for themselves. And there's very few things that we do where we have this kind. Of success that is double the state average, that has this, you know, seventy-nine percent completion rate. That really moves students along and helps them change their families and get over barriers. And so. If this was the only economic development or workforce thing we were doing. I'd be like, no, we can't do one thing. But if you're using this in our offerings, I think is really helpful, particularly. When we continue to have lower than other ca- our peer neighbor counties, high school graduation, college enrollment, college completion rates.
So I'm gonna offer a little bit. Maybe different perspective, and I really appreciate. Um, your courage, Julie, to bring this up, cause it's something that I brought up when I was a new commissioner. And I was told, and this is how it is, and and sit there and be quiet, um, because of all these great statistics. I really struggle with this. I'm also um, a first generation. Uh, second in my family, my sister got her degree, I followed in her footsteps. Um. Had I not had an employer, which was Adams County Government, offer a tuition reimbursement program. I would not have completed my degree. And so I think when you're faced with situations as a student, as a family that struggles, um. You sacrifice a lot. And what does that sacrifice look like for you? Is the individual. You know, a family, individual decision, um, this was, that was my only path forward. Was to lean into a tuition reimbursement program because, um. As a young person, I had no debt, I had one car payment, um. And there was no way that I could support myself, get into a loan until a head program under the Clinton administration came along. Um, was able to send myself to college. So I struggle with the depth of we do two and four-year scholarships. And yes, we reached seven hundred and fifty students over ten years, but we have thousands of kids that graduate every single year. Um, and I don't, I don't know where that dividing line is, is where we can offer certificates. Um, to kiddos that maybe you do get a food, not not food service, but you do get maybe a culinary degree, you do get a two-year degree. And, you know, everyone that I, one of my niece's friends went through this program and she's. A dental hygienist. I think it took her two years to go through it. And so I don't know the impact again on. It has to be a four-year degree. If we can help more students through a certificate program or through two-year.
We already do that. Does it says we have two.
But this is all, I, that's what I'll just clarify is as long as it's a public institution, it can be a certificate program, two-year concurrent. Or four-year. I do think the emphasis the districts have placed in the past in their allocations. Were often on four years or two years. Um, I do think there's a path forward and this is an opportunity with the new grant cycle. Um, I have several different ideas, one of them being what what was challenging about the old model was. Once we gave that allocation to a district, that money had to follow that cohort. And you'd have fifteen percent dropout, right, by the four years? And that had to be like reallocated right in that cohort. That was something that was put into place to try and do an equitable distribution to all the districts with. If this is gonna be dispersed, it would not be, we would not be able to manage it that way. And so we could do something of saying like. This is how many, you know, this is how many, we're gonna, we're gonna aim for this many certificate uh, programs. We're gonna aim for this and here's that. You can open your scholarship applications around this and then we'll make the decision about how many of each or whatever those goals and metrics. Um, we wanna be, but as long as it's a public institution, we've run into a lot of problems with private apprenticeships or like. Hensel Phelps or book and tuitions, we can't do any of that. It has to go to a public institution. And so the certificate programs are usually run through Front Range or. Uh, Red Rocks and those programs where we can actually then give the money to the school. We can also do something. Uh, where it's called the last dollar so that this goes in after other scholarships and they maximize. The amount of all their scholarships and it doesn't reduce their financial aid award at the. So there are options around that. I'm a first gen too, so have been through, I just paid off my student loan yesterday and my son starts college next year, so. You know, no retirement, but so I've also, the this process is like a really messy financial aid algorithm with the state. And seems to be getting messier, but there are things we can do as long as it's to a public institution. And that is the requirement. And if you wanna make it that the residents of Adams County, that could be the requirement. Um, but but if you wanna alter them, make it that they can't, like, what high schools they go to, we could do that. But that way it'll eliminate people who live in Adams County that do go to Pinnacle or do go to, um.
There there, there's a distinction on the board about to co- have a conversation about charter versus traditional public versus somebody who goes to a traditional public. But lives in the county. So there's different nuances on the table here that that we need to address. And I'm sorry, I just wanna make sure that we acknowledge.
I would just say, um. You know, we're ten years in. I know that this came through, came to us because of the funding changes um, at the state level. And what the grant matches. And I think that we, I'll I'll be honest, when I voted. I remember when this was on the ballot and I voted, I took education as not necessarily. Educational scholarships. I took it as education and marijuana and addiction. Um. A more pub- public, public announcement, public announcement versus individual education.
Yeah.
Aspiration. So I would just say, ten years in, um. I'm open to looking at this program. I know you're here because of funding, but even if it's program requirement, something that we also look at that. Meets, you know, boards desires and meets the needs of in our community. So with that, Kathy.
Thanks. So a couple of things, I I think also when a lot of people voted in twenty fourteen, they thought. That this tax revenue from legalized legalized marijuana was going to. Uh, fill our cough, our school, public school coffers overflowing and we'd never have to worry about public school education.
Again.
And I think that's, I think some, I mean, I think that's how some people interpreted education on that. So I think in in light of the the stipulation that this goes to, I mean, I think the scholarships are great and I like. How the cohorts have been handled because I'm seeing, I have a, I have a sophomore and a. Junior in college this year, let's start this next week. And I have watched, I have been different experiences with my own sons. I've seen other, and and heard what their friends are going through. I really caution against going a mile wide and an inch deep. I think the cohorts and the support services are critical, especially when we're talking about. Families who maybe don't have, um, a. An aunt and uncle and a sister to look to who've been through, who go, here's how you do this and and might need that extra support. I think that's really important, um. To to continue with that. I also like, and I'd be definitely, you know, two, four-year certificate, whatever it is, it's gonna help people get their jobs. We have big changes coming from in the funding, I think. I would, I think there are a couple nuances to to the points, the conversations Stephen and Emma are having about, and and I wanna be in it too, about. Lynn, about its residency and also school and and we can craft that. Um, but the changes that are coming vegetarily, um, I wouldn't wanna, maybe we look at some criteria if if that's. If if it made more latitude in that, but I wouldn't wanna make a lot of changes right away, right now, till we kind of see how this plays, plays out and, um. But I believe at least what you're talking about is making sure that we still have scholarships to give every year. Despite the fact that we only are, we're gonna be on a four-year cycle as opposed to an annual cycle, some of this funding.
Right. And it it may be a reduced amount of students, it may be a reduced amount of money. Also, like, there's capacity issues with providing wraparound services for two hundred forty, five hundred students. We are, and I can share this, we have had to collect narratives from a lot of students who've gone through it. They are really impactful to read. Um, a lot of them talk about the support services of knowing that they could contact somebody during the pandemic. A lot of students just. Don't file a form and lose it. And we're able to let. We've had multiple students need to take a semester off. They thought this was gone. We've encouraged them that we can roll it over. Though like that, that's a really key part, and I think the state is noticing that. They are requiring you to put. Dollars to wraparound supports in this new model. That's one of the reasons it is reduced. However, um, and I think Steve said this last time, like, we also want as much money going, if we're doing this, to go to families as possible. So I'm also arguing for like a reduced match that we're, or that they're making us spend for support services. Because we have such a system in place and a trained professional in place and and that is working. So that maybe we don't have to put as much to the admin kind of type side of this and more to the students if possible.
And could I, um, just, cause I know we're, um, short on time, but I'm just. Yeah, go. Still down to the decision point we wanna make today and give this conversation. What we're talking about today is really what what Kathy just mentioned, which is, do we want to continue for the next couple of years while we have cohort to support? To continue to maintain the level of scholarship that we have, which would mean a little bit more match from our marijuana funds than what we have previously been doing. To make up for the reduced match from cozy for the next couple of years and also. Apply for the launch um, opportunity, which is coming up here in a couple of weeks. That's sort of for right now to manage the cohort we have. And at the same time, we're gonna be having these conversations over the next year or two as we wind through that. Cohort about where we really wanna go with these funds, um, beyond that. But that's really the question today that we're. Wanna make sure we're good with that plan. If we don't wanna invest so much match, that means smaller scholarships. If we wanna hold the, you know, amount that we've been investing, um, then that means, you know, more like fifteen hundred dollars than three thousand. So we wanted to. Really get your direction on that, um, and we will be continuing this conversation going forward.
I think clarify launch is also a direct match. So you are still doing, your dollar goes to two dollars. They're just not, they're being conservative. On what they're investing for these next couple of years.
Great. Commissioners, you'll see here, um, we we tried, tried to let it out. So M S S is the the current program as we know it. That application isn't for a couple of months.
Right, that'll be in the spring.
In the spring. Achieve is what we're here for today, that that Dion was talking about. That has a September one. Um, application deadline. So that is one of the main reasons we're here with you all today to talk through that investment. And then launch, as Lisa shared, we already did apply for, um, A C E C did receive that. So as long as the board would like to continue with that, we have that in motion to continue to fund or to start. To fund launch, which is the newer program. So to Dion's point, this is our main ask today is. Can we move forward with these numbers in these upcoming grant applications? And we'll see what what we get, what the state comes back with. And then we can always decide from there, starting to work with our work group in the longer term, what we'd like to do for the long term.
I'm Julie and Steve.
Yeah, I know we gotta make a decision here. Um, you know, I would really welcome further discussion on how these dollars are used. One of the things that. Is getting on me is just the situation that we're in, especially with our working families being hit with Medicaid cuts, SNAP cuts, a C cap. Waitlist. I mean, if we wanna talk about how we could really impact those families, I mean. You know, maybe it is an after-school childcare opportunity, um, that some of these dollars could go to. That's, that's huge. That means somebody gets to work. Um, I mean, we're, we're in such of a new world. Or completely new world. And when this uh, program was originally put in place, our county has so many other needs. Um, and again, I'm not against kids getting scholarships, but I'm also just saying. You know, are, we have other county needs that this money could go towards, um. You know, after-school programs is huge. Uh, that could be a great example, and I'm sure there's lots of other examples. Um, you know, maybe it it goes to more kids doing trade schools. I'm not sure if that's, trade schools are included, okay?
As long as it's public, yeah.
As long as it's public, okay.
And that's the state marijuana stipulation.
Yes.
Okay. Has a pretty robust trade program.
Yeah, okay. So I don't know, I I I just feel like. We're in a different world than twenty fourteen when this program started. And so. I I wouldn't be against reevaluating how we move some of this, these dollars around. If we wanna move forward as status quo today. Um, fine, but really I would love to to talk about other ways to meet really pressing needs that are. Crushing our lowest income families right now, um, and any way we could do to to help even a handful. Of extra families could make a huge difference.
It it, I would support. Wait, what's the timing again that we need this? Because. I don't want to push status quo just because. It's status quo. I mean, if there's time for us to do the analysis that Lynn and Julie are asking for. Let's do the analysis and then make the decision. I, uh, uh, my, what I was getting at when I was talking about earlier is like. You could go a mile wide, inch deep, or you could go deep and have a greater impact. And and that's a question that we're constantly always having is depth versus breadth. Um, and I think that that's okay for us to have that conversation, but ten years, it's almost like a natural time for us to reassess anyway. And we have new leaders and I just know that, like, I'm telling you what I've been most proud of up to this point. But that huge match was a big part of what nudged us in this direction. If there are other impacts you think we can have that are deep enough where it's meaningful. Um, then I think, I think we should like, and if it means that you guys figure out like how you wanna do that brainstorm, I'm okay to put. Put pump the brakes on this now. I'm not gonna push real hard like for status quo. I just want you to know that. I'm open.
Well, the 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 Achieve application says it's due September first. So are we applying for Achieve or not? I guess is the question. Can we apply and then say if they could, oh, we're awarded, we can say, but we're gonna do something different? I don't know.
Yeah, you can. I do wanna just emphasize, it's a really massive application and it's like a lot of components. They are. It's a seventy-page document, which is one of the nutty things that has happened by doing, like, they kind of put everything. But the kitchen's.
Did you say seventy?
I did.
Seven, uh, seven zero.
And it's been a three-year process to. Yeah, it's been a process to regroup. So to do it, it's a pretty massive thing. I do wanna say this number is up to. And every year, except that we wanna at least let our cohort know what they're gonna get, right, at at the minimum. You, we can change, we can pull out of things like there, it isn't like you're not locked in.
Okay.
For any of this, but this opportunity will not be available for another four years with the state to match this.
So.
I wanted you guys to know that I'm totally open for what you're talking about. Makes sense. That's all.
So apply for Achieve, um. Is that the only decision point we needed today or do you have another one?
The launch as well. You guys wanted information about launch?
Yes, A C E C did apply and was granted that.
Okay, yeah.
And and watch, if the board like, we'd like to move forward with dispersing of that as well.
Is this funding, and I don't know if they can do it by location, um.
Is Boys and Girls Club eligible for this type of funding? Because I'm hearing challenges of, of the Boys and Girls Club in Brighton.
My understanding is Cozy is only focusing on post-secondary and workforce development there. Well, state marijuana dollars and county dollars are available for after school programming. But I, my understanding is that also has to be public. So it's been challenging to use. You know, private or small in-home. I know that's growing, uh, daycare programs to do it. And so it does become just whatever, when those conversations start, it becomes a really big kind of system. Even this is a pretty big system of seventy pages of kinda ridiculous requirements.
All right. Thank you so much for your presentation. Anything else?
You're good.
So I think if, if I may, uh, commissioners, we, we are gonna apply for achieve. We're gonna move forward with dispersment of launch. And we're gonna apply for MSS as well because that is our.
That's what the last two cohorts that are already in. We will know what that amount is after they tell us what they're gonna give us achieve, cuz we'll apply for more in MSS. Like, it won't be above this number at all. Um, it'll probably be below it unfortunately with the state right now.
And then we'll, we'll move forward with the working group that we had talked about. To strategize for the future. Thank you, Craig. Thank you.
How's everyone doing? Nice short public hearing.
No big deal.
Do that right through.
Okay, so as many of you know, we celebrated the final event with Carrie Joy this past Saturday. Uh, our inaugural poet laureate. Uh, it was amazing. Beautiful capstone event, very successful. A lot of people, a lot of poets, just high energy, a lot of great art. Uh, it was a wonderful night. And we've been working the last several months to bring on our second poet laureate to bring its residency into its next phase. So we are bringing the awarded artist to you today. Eric Francis is an accomplished poet and teaching artist. They're based in Green Valley Ranch, just across the street. From Adams County. Uh, they have wonderful ties to the community. Their mother and sister are teachers and Adams twelve and. They, uh, were very excited about this residency. They're the author of several chapbooks, full-length collection manuscripts, an experimental audiobook. And an LP and an EP album of poetry. They've received poetry fellowships with SAFTA, the Chrysalis Institute. Canto Mundo, The Watering Hole. Uh, they've been finalists for several awards, including the Cat Booker Prize. The Satinello Books Prize. And not only are they an accomplished author, but they're deeply connected to the Colorado arts community. They've hosted youth programming at Lighthouse Writers Workshop for five years. They served as the event coordinator for. The local poetry collective Slam Nuba. Uh, they hosted events all around Colorado, including open mics at Red Line Contemporary Arts Center and Untitled at the Denver Art Museum. Uh, so we are just thrilled to bring them on. We had a, a very unique, um, a very inclusive artist selection panel. Uh, as you know, we have a unique selection panel for each individual project that we do, uh, of this caliber and this size. This one had ten jurors sit on the panel. The award was unanimous. Um, they were selected for the quality of their written work. They're an excellent, excellent writer. The way that they. The way that they interact with the words is just, is just magical, uh, as well as their beautiful performance. Uh, they have an incredibly warm and welcoming energy and they have a deep love and excitement for poetry and this residency specifically. Their dedication will really build on the momentum that Carrie Joy built over these last several years, um, together with Anythink and Adams County. Their approach for the residency is focused on deep conversation. So it's all about. Really intentional conversation, not just the dialogue that sparks, but they really wanna see this residency as an opportunity to be a catalyst. For these meaningful connections. We are, we just completed an extensive orientation with them, with Adams County as well as Anything branches, bringing them. To all corners of the county. And we're currently in planning to dream up what this residency might look like throughout the next two years. We are planning a welcome breakfast for Eric on Tuesday, September thirtieth, right before a public hearing as an opportunity to. Meet Eric, hear their poetry, hear them perform, um, and for the county commissioners and Anything Library and Leadership. Stakeholders to welcome Eric as the new laureate. Our plan is to send out a press release in early to mid-September to announce the event and Eric as the new poet laureate. And then the public programming will kick off in early twenty six and run through summer of twenty seven.
I have a question. Is this now gonna be a budget-ish line? So it's separate, like, to pay for all this?
That is a good question. So, um, we have submitted it as a budget request. When we first started the program, it was part of the percentage for the arts is the way that we were allocating it. Uh, but because the percentage for the arts has been divided, it's essentially divided in the four funds that we're supported by. And general fund was the one that we were pulling the funds for this. But we're not seeing the funds come in from that. And so we have submitted it as a budget request through the cultural arts division.
There's essentially none of general fund projects to, to generate enough money to support the program.
Yeah, I just wanna, like, I think what you've done is such a good job. I kinda look at the last year with Carrie Joy as like a pilot program. You found the money in a few different spots of the kitchen, underneath the cushion here and you found it here. And I, I look at this, that, that unless I have, hear something different from the team. We believe there was enough success with the Carrie Joy thing. Let's formalize this as its own program with its own funding. So we don't have to worry about it being something that, like, in the past, even before both you, we had like a couple, like. Art shows and then they went away. And then, like, I think what, where I was excited is to see Pride Fest and Latino Fest and some of these other things become. Actual budget items and they serve as kind of a pseudo checklist every year because then they're sustainable and repeatable. And then if we ever decide to remove it, then it's a deliberate, intentional discussion. Uh, to keep it on, kinda default I guess, or intentional take it off. But what I don't wanna do is get into, I wanna break the cycle where some of these other kind of. Squishy cool ideas go away because we didn't formalize it. And I'd like to say to the team, can we formalize this as a program that we wanna stand by? Of course, we need the dollar figure. But I, I just, I'm trying to help us. With the ten years that I've seen here, there's a lot of really cool stuff that we've done and then it goes away and it goes away. And the ones that are sustainable are the ones that you literally put down. It's a line item and then next year, it's still there. And then when I take it off, then you take it off, but it's not like, oh, I don't know where it went.
What is the twenty six budget request that you guys have coming forward?
That is a great question and not one I was prepared to answer at this moment. But, uh, we did submit it, um, and it would be, it's, it's a blend of. The artist stipend, the, the small events that we put on with Anything. They also contribute some dollars to this program and then, uh, the anthology that we're printing. But I can't remember if we submitted it just as poet laureate or if we actually did it as community programming, which I think we might have done. Just a slightly broader, um, to be, just because a lot of these programs tend to be. A little more flexible, like we know who the laureate is, but we don't know exactly what we're doing yet. And so I think we might have submitted it as community programming.
Yeah, and we can provide you with the specifics for sure.
That's fair. Yeah, that'll be a discussion here in a month or so.
And we were really detailed in our requests what the funding would cover. Um, so my apologies, we just went through a couple iterations and I carry myself. That's okay, no worries.
So it's general fund. And you're gonna come back with the budget request for twenty six for this program.
Is it a two-year or one-year program?
This is a two-year.
The last one was two years as well, I think, right?
But the budget request was only for one year.
On the table is if you approve it one year, we're kind of also proving. Sort of, an expectation.
So was this ever part of? The arts program? Does it ever come out of the arts program?
As part of this, yes. And, um, we had funding for it when we were doing quite a lot of CIP out of our general fund reserve. And so it filtered into the programming for the arts.
Are the shares office, so is it by project the art goes back to? Cuz we're gonna do some probably major. Spend in for the detention center. So. I, I'm trying to be.
Capital projects, yes. And we can.
Pognison of the draws on the general fund.
We can send around the, um, just to remind everybody, cuz I think it's been a minute and we were intended to come back. Stop allowing me to point at you. But we were intended to come back to outline, um, the percentage of the arts and. Our SCFD and, and how we plan for art generally. Um, I think in the next month is what we were thinking. But we can give you all the, um, bylaws for how it's set up. Ahead of that.
Okay, I just, okay. I know we're coming back to present on SCFD. Are we coming back to present on the percentage for the arts? Cuz that's a, that's a whole other, okay, okay, cuz that's a.
I know you probably said it, but I. Um, what is the amount that we would be contributing annually?
So it's about fifty K. It will, it is fifty thousand for the artist stipend. And then there are events that will happen over the first year. It actually starts in twenty five.
The Adams County portion?
Anything contributes ten thousand.
So our portion.
The artist stipend.
So ours is forty then?
Yes, but it's over, it's twenty five, twenty six and twenty seven and over that course. So it would be twenty five K. And then twelve, twelve, and then anything contributes ten. And then we have the anthology, which will most likely print out in twenty seven and that will probably be. And then our events. I would like to come back to you with an actual. I can jot this down, but I think.
And then just a ballpark, like it is fifty thousand dollars to the artist, but anything contributes ten. The art portion of that is forty, right? And that, that's.
Not per year, that's the entirety of the two years. So that's twenty and twenty-six.
And then does that stipend include all the additional expenses on an ad hoc basis of the additional appearances? And they have no, so it's more than that.
Right. And so just to be clear, it's only twenty thousand for the artist stipend during. The course of twenty six because the residency actually flanks twenty five through twenty seven.
Okay, yes. All right. So additional, there are additional expenses, but the ballpark we're talking is something, just a, a little bit north of twenty thousand.
Or I would say it's around probably thirty-five thousand when you think about events.
For Adams County.
And the anthology, cuz the second, the, in twenty seven, the focus will be on the publication. And so that's what I would. Ballot right now. So it's south of fifty thousand per year.
How much?
South of fifty thousand.
Per year?
Per year.
Which is different than the forty thousand.
More than twenty, less than fifty annually from Adams County General Fund. It's a hu- I think it's a huge exponential factor. This is one of those things that's an amplifier, I feel like, in community for the spend. That's my perspective on this program.
Well, and, and we would like to do more of the community programming. And I know it sounds like we're gonna come back and present this to you, but. The way the percentage for the arts works now is the way we're funded in the four different funds. It's not directly tied to the project. That's how we're funded, but it is directly tied to the fund. So if we're funded for. You know, uh, Fifty Eighth Street, for example, we received funds and we actually did an art project there. If there's a road and bridge fund. Project that doesn't work for art, we can take that money. We still have to spend it in road and bridge this. We have to spend it in another road and bridge area or. Um, some, some sort of infrastructure integration. And so because of that, we receive funding in road and bridge capital facilities, open space and. And general fund. General fund, we've seen a, a really small dollar amount and it's getting smaller and smaller. Whereas in some others, we've seen it significant. So we have funding. In certain areas of the percentage for the arts and not necessarily in the others. So how we. Receive that funding is potentially a, a, an opportunity for discussion because we have money for the arts. It's just that right now we have a lot of money in capital facilities because of the, the Brenner Gulch project. And so we can't really use that for our community programming out and about, not related in any way to the regional park program. So. Yeah, I just think that's an important factor. Uh, there are limitations in, in the current way that it's made up.
I love what you're doing. All I'm saying is let's formalize it because in this conversation, it's very clear. It's not clear. And I think it's important that we break the cycle of, uh, of a lack of clarity because it also creates a lack of consistency. And then what'll happen is if we don't get this clarity upfront, then we're gonna have people. Like learning something and then getting pissy about it and assuming ill intention and we're gonna, let's just frontload all this.
Have ever done that.
Let's just frontload all this, hand it all out on the table and then it's never an issue. Okay?
It's never an issue.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner's dinner is here.